Of eleven Tannenger Road came in to let the Board of Selectmen know that he is very happy with the new roundabout. He travels Wallace Road a lot and finds it very helpful. He figured the Board of Selectmen needed to hear a good response for a change. Thank you, Mo. Appreciate it.
We're gonna frame that one.
It's kinda like what you put on the kitchen refrigerator, so maybe we'll just post them. Okay. Okay, this is a little bit harder to try to decipher, but this was from Leslie Corbin, and it was directed to Kathy Ball, and basically it was a very complimentary email that was directed to Derek Horner, our code enforcement official, in that he was very prompt and when he went above and beyond with regard to handling their concerns regarding some zoning issues, so I wanna thank Derek for a job well done there. And Phil, not to put you too much on the spot, but we're just at announcements.
You are?
Yes, I am.
Just in time.
All right.
Appreciate it. Came through a damn escape circle, it was an accident over there. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that the Board is aware that one of our officers, Paul LaValle, did receive a lifesaving award by the Goffstown Police Association at their annual meeting on December eighth. He was advised, well, actually, let me back up. On December eighth, Officer LaValle was advised by Communications, our Goffstown Communications, of a subject that was having difficulty breathing at a residence in Moose Club Park. The victim was a sixty-seven-year-old male who was unresponsive when Officer LaValle arrived. Officer LaValle attempted to call for assistance on his portable radio, but was unable to contact dispatch. And this is just pointing out one of the difficulties that we've had with our radios. Officer LaValle persevered and began CPR as well as using his AED while waiting for medical personnel to arrive. Sergeant LaRoche did arrive to assist, and he was also unable to contact dispatch with his portable radio. Because of Officer LaValle's swift professional actions, the victim had a spontaneous pulse prior to him being placed into the ambulance. Sergeant LaRoche later learned from the hospital that the victim will most likely pull through as a direct result of Officer LaValle's efforts. And the Chief formally commended Officer LaValle for his compassion and professionalism on his medical call, and these calls can be very stressful at any time. And with addition to the poor radios, Officer LaValle did an outstanding job and saved this man's life. And he was awarded the lifesaving award.
That is excellent. Congratulations. I think that this is something that I think is very infrequent that we get these. I don't think I've ever, in my years, I don't recall an officer getting one of these. Is this, how frequently does this happen?
We've had several over the years.
Okay, but recently?
Only the last one's over the years.
All right. I guess my, I think this deserves, I mean, obviously it was an announcement, but I think it deserves a little something more, maybe from the Board. I don't know, I'll think about it, but...
Okay, we can discuss that.
Yeah. I mean, this is a very high level of recognition when you do something, and I think we endeavor to do that on our ambulance and fire services, but maybe there's something more.
Right. A few years back, when Sergeant Gary Gaben was on the force, he also received that award for his responsiveness at burglary and a shooting in Farnardville at the Cumberland Farms. That was a while back.
All right. Thank you. Moving forward, we have our acceptance of minutes. We have two sets. One of them is on December twenty-ninth, and we'll start with that one first. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of December twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten, with or without corrections?
So move.
We have a motion to accept them through the second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Selectman DeVanzo. Any corrections? Not hearing any. All those in favor of accepting the December twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And then lastly would be, need a motion to accept the January third minutes?
Motion to accept the January third minutes.
Okay. There a second on that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Selectman DeVanzo again. Any corrections? Not hearing any. All those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Again, five zero. All right. Just so everyone out there knows what our agenda kinda looks like, 'cause sometimes they don't see that, we'll briefly, we'll go into our Town Administrators Report very shortly. After that, we'll be discussing our two thousand and eleven town budget and the two thousand and eleven warrant. We may also need to take a recess at some point to get an update on some collective bargaining. Sue, when do you think is it appropriate to do that?
Probably after the Town Administrators Report.
Okay, all right. Okay, it is six-ten, and this is a time where we take public comment. I do not see any public here, so we will move ahead. Town Administrators Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packet, Tuesday at six o'clock, the Superior Commission meets, and Wednesday at seven is the Budget Committee's public hearing in Goffstown High School. Since there is a prediction of snow, watch for email messages because Dan will call it if it looks like it has to be postponed till Thursday night. And I'm, he said he would call it in the morning and then I'd get the word out.
Okay.
Thursday night at seven PM is the Planning Board, so if he moves it to Thursday night, that will conflict with the Planning Board meeting.
Well, I have to be at the Planning Board meeting.
Consensus folder tonight is AP warrants for two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven.
Okay, I need a...
Motion to approve.
Does Sarah second? I'll second it. Any discussion on the consensus folder? Not hearing any. All those in favor of accepting it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Thank you. The assessor has some recommendations tonight. Veterans tax credits, MAP six, lot twenty-two, one oh nine. MAP eight, lot sixteen dash eight. MAP nine, lot thirty-six dash two and ninety-seven. MAP sixteen, lot sixty-six. And MAP thirty-nine, lot five dash twenty-three. Also, an intent of timber cut on MAP one, lot thirty-eight, and a report of timber cut on MAP seven, lot forty-nine.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Thank you. You have some fee requests from different departments and offices. The Fire Chief recommends that the Board of Selectmen proceed with the required public hearing to establish a fee of three hundred dollars for a paramedic intercept. You have in your packet his memo for more detail. Also, the Town Clerk recommends that the Board proceed with the required public hearing to establish a notary fee for non-residents, with the exception of those who are applying for town employment, and also to establish a one-dollar fee for online motor vehicle registrations to cover the processing costs such as mailing, miker ink, and check stock.
All right, let's start with the first one. We did receive a memo from the Fire Chief with regard to the request to establish a fee, and again, if this Board was to proceed, then we would hold the public hearings with regard to that. Anyone like, since the Fire Chief is here, would anybody like Chief O'Brien to comment on this, or do you feel the memo is self-explanatory?
Well, since we're discussing this at a public meeting and it's for a paramedic intercept, could we have an explanation for everybody that's watching or listening?
That is a good enough reason to have Chief O'Brien come down and...
Good evening. A paramedic intercept is services that we provide neighboring communities that need a paramedic for advanced level care. For example, if the medical emergency's in the town of Ware, Ware ambulance is transporting the patient with basic life support, personnel onboard, and the patient is critical enough or has acute illnesses enough to require advanced level care on the way to the hospital, you can call for a paramedic to assist with that patient care while in with the hospital. So they would call us, we'd meet the ambulance somewhere in between Ware and the hospital, and we would jump onboard and provide care. It's become customary to bill for these kinda services. Unfortunately, you can't bill Medicare direct for that, because you already have a provider that's providing transport and care, so they'll be billing that patient for that transport and care. But it's become customary that people providing paramedic level care or the paramedic intercept bill that service or town for that service provided. So for example, Concord Fire Department provides a paramedic intercept for the town of Dunbarton ambulance. They'll send a bill to the town of Dunbarton, and they would pay for that service. That happens to us also. For example, if we don't have a paramedic on duty and we need one for patient care, we will call, say, a paramedic from Bedford, and Bedford Fire would send over the paramedic, they would jump onboard, and they would bill us three hundred dollars for that service. But how do we get that money back? What we do is we then bill that patient as if that paramedic was ours, and we bill at that ALS rate. So we do get that money back, but Bedford Fire gets some of the money back to recoup for their costs and their services. So I'm asking the Board to, for approval for the extension of the fees for this particular service, we estimate that we probably do this in the order of twelve to twenty times a year to our neighboring towns.
Okay. This is a fee that we're going to be charging to the other communities?
Correct.
And we're going to have a public hearing in order to charge this fee or collect this fee, however we're gonna regard, however you look at it. Is there a requirement that the neighboring communities be notified that we're having this public hearing, since it's to charge them?
What happens, what's happened to us anyway, we've been notified that there's been a fee established by these departments. For example, Bedford, when they established their fee, they notified their neighboring communities just to let them know that if they call, they'll be billed. This is something that obviously I've already broken the ice with Ware and New Boston and Dunbarton, and told them that we were looking into this, and they're totally agree that it's fair, and it's basically whatever else all the other departments have been doing.
Currently, if you provide paramedic intercept services for Community X, can that community bill the patient for those paramedic services?
Correct.
And you're not being reimbursed currently?
Correct.
So the Community X is currently taking advantage of the, one, the medical expertise and also the increased billing?
Correct. For example, if XYZ Rescue Squad, we jump onboard, assist the patient, if they, if we did not jump onboard, say their fee would be two hundred and fifty dollars. But now, we jump onboard, it's now an ALS level treatment and care given to that patient. Traditionally, that doubles their fee that they can get from Medicare and other insurance providers. So they are getting that extra money, and we're not.
Follow. That wouldn't affect mutual aid. For instance, if Community X needed an ambulance, as communities go back and forth, we would send an ambulance to that community, but we would then bill the patient.
Correct. For example, if we want mutual aid to Manchester for an ambulance call, and we transport that patient, then we're just gonna bill the patient as if we picked the patient up in Goffstown.
Just a clarification, just so everyone is aware. Insurance companies, as well as the federal government, Medicare, Medicaid, they look at the medical necessity. We can't charge a double fee or double the fee just simply because we throw a paramedic on the ambulance. There has to be medical necessity for that advanced care in order for that reimbursement to occur.
Correct. We could have a paramedic on duty here in Goffstown and get called to the high school for, say, a laceration that's very minor, but they need to be transported to the hospital. We'd bill at the basic life support rate, which is a lot less, even though we have a paramedic onboard.
Any other questions? All right. So in that respect, need a motion to proceed, you have another?
I was gonna make a...
Okay.
I was gonna make a motion that we proceed to public hearing on the Chief's requested fee increase, including notification of all the surrounding communities, in case they wanna make themselves available for the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, next would be the Town Clerk's request, which I think is twofold. The first one would be to establish a notary fee for non-residents, with the exception of those applying for town employment. And has the town, we know what fee the Town Clerk is contemplating for this notary fee.
Five dollars per signature.
Okay. And...
I think she said one town was doing the, we're not looking at this as a revenue maker, but also we're looking...
At time spent doing all these things.
Exactly. For non-residents.
Sir, I have a question, though.
Yeah.
When, you know, you say a non-resident, though, if a person pays taxes to the town, but they're not necessarily a resident of the town, would they be charged, even though they own property here and...
It's usually residents who live in outer towns that are charging, and they come in, they come in here to have their notary done because it's not...
I think the difference may be that Selectman DeVanzo, we could have a business owner in our town who needs something notarized, yet so they are...
So you want a non-taxpayer fee? Non-resident, non-taxpayer fee?
No, I'm just, I'm just raising the issue that if we just said non-resident, we, that, I think the intent is that, you know, folks that are residents and/or they're paying taxes, that's part of the whole, that's why they pay taxes. I hear what you're saying, so I'm just trying to, you know, understand what, that there is additional, that there is work that the Town Clerk does. I just, I don't even know, like, the Chief talked about frequency of these intercepts. Do we have any idea how many we're talking about?
About twenty percent of what they notarize are non-residents.
And I, and how many of these notar, I mean, how many notary type activities are they doing? 'Cause I, I mean, I've had things notarized, and you do have to, there are, you have to review the documents and sign off. It's not, it is, it takes you a few minutes to do it.
Kathy had the numbers that she had, you know, we have several notaries in Town Hall.
Okay.
It's not just the Town Clerk's office.
What is, what else is the Board? I'm just trying to get an idea of the ballpark.
I mean, you say twenty percent, twenty percent of, you know, ten versus twenty percent of a thousand, you mean, I mean, not holding you to a number, are we talking hundreds or thousands, or?
I can get that from her. She was, she did have a memo she was writing to the Board on this, but I wanted to get all the fee requests in tonight, and she was busy.
I was gonna say, I look at it both ways. If it's a very small number, fee doesn't affect many people. If it's a large number, then obviously we're using a lot of our Town Clerk's time and doing work for non-residents.
That's how I look at it, too. So for me, it'd be...
Where are, are there any other fees that are, the Town Clerk does along this line? It's not part of the licensing or permitting?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Is this the only fee, then she, the Town Clerk would be...
Putting forward, we have, yes.
And so where, where would this fee, where would this fee be documented or notice on the Town Clerk?
She keeps a log of all the notary work that she does, and she would add a column for fees, for the amount paid for each one.
Do we need clarification then for non-residents, but...
Non-taxpayer.
Business owners, which are taxpayers, are covered?
Yep, we can get that from her.
All right, so I think, from what I'm hearing, it may be a little premature on that one. There seems to be an interest from the Board as to if it, within the volume that we're talking about. Also recognizing that we could, we could collect this nominal notary fee, but then there's a processing of the payment, keeping track of it, you know, which also, depending upon the volume, may...
Well, like, she tracks every transaction anyway, so it's just adding the dollar amount.
I was gonna say, could we go forward with the public hearing and with the note that we wanted those, we want those answers to be presented at that time?
And then the second one is a one-dollar fee for only online motor vehicle registrations to cover processing costs, mailing costs, and the Town Clerk did provide information to support, again, we don't make money off of these fees, she's simply looking to cover...
Her expenses, yes.
The associated costs, such as the return envelope, the actual postage stamp, check stock, et cetera. So is there any objections to proceeding with both of these? And if so, or if not, then I'll just take a motion.
I have a question, though. Uh, I guess the question that I have, though, is what's driving this?
What's driving it?
Is it getting tighter?
Yeah.
She wants to recoup her costs?
And the reason why, the reason why I ask the question is because online registrations is one of the things that I, when we first established this, this is one of the things that I was very for, to establish this, for it. And when we did this, you know, this discussion about this, you know, it's one thing, I have one vehicle, so this would cost me a dollar, okay? But you take a family that's got, and today, I mean, it's not unusual for a family with kids to have four vehicles in the family. Now you're looking at four dollars. You might say, well, it's only four dollars. But this is something that's being transferred from the tax, what I pay in my taxes, that's deductible on my federal income tax, and now I'm paying a fee that's not deductible, I guess. And I just, if it's because of budget cuts, is this something that really should be, should we keep it in the budget?
Selectman Pierce.
People choosing the convenience of registering online also pay a dollar and a half per vehicle, and thirty-five cents apparently is a one-time charge for the login. And at some point, you may drive up the convenience fee of doing it online too high, so we have more people standing in line at the clerk's desk.
Our vendor gets that money, we don't.
Yes.
Okay.
But when I looked at this, knowing I only lived two blocks away, I, not knowing there was a convenience fee for this, I logged, I logged on to do it, and I said, oh geez, almost two dollars, I guess I'll walk one block over to the Town Hall and do it in person. There, if, in your situation, there may be a number of cars, and they will, considerable number of people will choose not to do it online and then stand in line. So now, now it's impact on the time. But exact, the problem that we run into is that we've changed the hours in Town Hall, and the comments that I get from many people that, coming down here to do that transaction, since it closes at four o'clock, I can't get down here, so I have no choice. I'm just bringing up, I'm just bringing up an issue. The concern, when this was initially done, I mean, things that have traditionally been in the tax rate, and people's taxes have been paying for, are now being transferred because of budget constraints to fees.
I gotta get Steve, then I gotta Nick.
I'm just gonna agree with, I'm just gonna agree with Phil. I think that the whole, the whole purpose of being able to do it electronically online is because we close at four, it gives that convenience, it gives the access to it. If I come and up here and I stand in line, I'm not charged anything, but yet I don't have access, you know, after four o'clock. And last but not least, I do agree with, that's the part you pay in your taxes, that you've already paid for the Town Clerk, et cetera, to do these processes.
I agree, but I don't agree. And first, I'll say that this is new, e-online registration, so this is not something that we've ever paid for in our taxes before. We've paid for Town Clerk's office and the salaries and everything that goes along with it. But I think the general move on this Board has been to try to move to electronic transactions to ease, I mean, you could do one of two things. We can hire more people, or we can try to move people into an electronic transaction. By raising the fee, however, you may take away that convenience initiative, and people will rather stand in line than pay that extra money. That now starts to turn the tide to more man-hours are required to get this done. And I think this is gonna happen more and more and more, because, as I said last week, when you look at the pie, operating budgets are shrinking, so Town Clerk's office doesn't have this dollar per transaction anymore. It's getting harder and harder to meet that operating budget, but they have the people, so people have to do more with less. We're gonna see more of this as that pie starts to shrink, and that operating piece gets smaller and smaller and smaller, and the salary piece gets bigger and bigger and bigger. So it's kind of a double-edged sword here. They need that fee to be able to start covering these expenses, but we're also gonna start this, that incentive is going to be reduced by people to use this. We wanna try to move people out of the office and online.
Sue.
The dollar fee, I just wanna make it clear, is not per vehicle, it's per login. So if they had four vehicles logging in all at the same time, registering all at the same time, it's one dollar.
I will also, I'll just throw my two cents in that this is a good discussion here, and that's sometimes what you want to get the public hearing to comment about. So I don't, I would recommend that we put both of these before a public hearing, and it doesn't necessarily mean that this Board has to do both one or any of them, but it does allow the community to state their feelings and I, on all three of these things, for that matter. So it's not saying that we endorse it at this point, but it certainly, we want their input as to, you know, on these things. So, and it is, I think, Nick, you summarized it fairly well. We do wanna drive more people to doing things online, because it helps our, it helps us be more efficient here at Town Hall, but by the same token, a price where the fee could not be unreasonable, where it would drive people to actually not do that. So the arguing, argument could be made that a one-dollar online fee is probably not going to dissuade someone from standing in line. On the flip side, than it is, I already pay a lot in taxes, why are you nickel and diming me on a one-dollar fee? So that's the, but that's what we have to hear from the community and then weigh in on making a decision, so.
All right, so I need a motion, if I may, to proceed with the public hearing on the Town Clerk's recommend, request to establish a one-dollar online motor vehicle registration fee, as well as a notary fee. Is there a second? Or, sorry, is there a motion to that effect, to proceed with the public hearing? Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? That fails. Okay. Is there any particular component of this that you would like to see go forward? Whether that be just the notary fee or just the online motor vehicle registration fee?
Make a motion for the notary fee to go forward to hearing?
Okay, do I have a second for that? Second. Okay. Any further discussion on that one? Oh, it'll be a public hearing to discuss the fee, and then she would present how she's gonna do it in terms of the non-resident and business owner, as long, okay? Okay, all those in favor of Selectman Pierce's motion, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous? Unanimous. All right. Next.
Next, you have a grant request. The Fire Chief would like Board of Selectmen approval to apply for FEMA's fire prevention and safety grant. The proposed grant application will be for equipment and materials to support our students' firefight and challenge program they conduct each year at middle, at the middle school. Right now, the estimated cost of the entire program for the grant is sixty-six thousand dollars. The match for this grant will be five percent. The grant application is open now and will close on February fourth.
Come on down, Chief. Lot of questions on this one.
I know those aren't his current costs, I already asked him.
I was gonna say.
Not current costs.
Okay.
This is a program that the Department's been working on for several years now. In fact, the Lions Club was in here earlier with an award for us. And with that, the program gets better and better every year, but unfortunately, a few things happen as it evolves and gets, gets a lot of favorite praise from all involved. We'd like to make it better, and how do we do that? Right now, we currently run this program, it affects the middle school folks up in Mountain View. Mountain View Middle School, so it really, every year, we, we target approximately 300 students in the eighth grade class, but everything obviously builds up to that, because the other kids in, in the other classes see this happening, and they, they can't wait to get involved. But, so it's a combination of a, of a physical program, plus we do a fire prevention program, you know, and an academic program. So what our plan was, is to take it a step further and try to make it a better program, a more professional-like program. We currently take all of the equipment that we have off of trucks when it occurs, and we set up this course with ladders, we use the ladder truck as one of the pulley areas, and we have hose and so forth, and what we, and we have a firefighter gear also that we put on them. What we envisioned was to try to make it a self-sustaining program where, instead of taking equipment off fire apparatus, that we get equipment solely for this program. Everything from audio, audio, audio equipment to barricades, to its own equipment, to a self, be self-sustaining in a trailer, and that way we could take it to the event and go from there. Again, this could also stem into another, other similar fire prevention type programs that we have at either Old Home Day or at other public events. So we talk about equipment for this, and you go 60, you know, it's not to exceed 66,000. We're kind of looking at how much a trailer costs, how much, all the ladder, the equipment, gear and so forth, and it adds up. So we wanna make sure it's a, you know, it's one of those things where we, we pull in, we could set it up, and that's the, the, the center point of, of the program. The fire, fire, fire prevention and safety grant program by Health, by Homeland Security and FEMA, offers up about $20 million a year for programs like this, whether it's a learn not to burn scenario, or they go through research. A lot of communities try to get one of those learn not to burn trailers that they can tow to events and fairs and so on. Others can do smoke detector programs, and they buy smoke detectors and, and distribute, install smoke detectors in the community. This is where we, we, we work on the, the elementary school level kids, we come visit, and we show them the fire truck, and, and we tell them about, you know, how fire and what to do, if to call, call 911, and then we kind of don't really do many programs in the middle school and the high school, so we wanna enhance those programs going up to the grade levels to remind them about fire safety and fire prevention, and this was one of our goals. Now that we know that the, the firefighting challenge is a successful program, we can build on that. So with that help, we, we know this could be a cost issue with the equipment and to sustain it, that we want to apply for this grant, so we don't have a burden onto, under our budgets and to, in our equipment, to keep this going. Now, the 5% match is, is by population, so we're under 20,000 in population, so we'll need to come up with a 5% match from whatever we're looking at, whether, you know, say 60,000, you're still looking at approximately $3,000. It would come, technically, it would come out of the town of Goffstown, but we'd be looking at possible contributions from the Lions Club, reading the Fire, the Firefighters' Association, and see if they could contribute to it also.
You said that was the Lions Club and what else?
The Firefighters' Association.
Firefighters' Association, thank you.
Now, is it safe to say that this equipment can be used double duty? I mean, if you're talking about equipment, you just, you just said a few things, a trailer, a barricades, et cetera, I'm thinking, well, if we have an emergency, then we would use barricades, we would use equipment, we, we could potentially use a trailer to, if we had an emergency, we would set up like, you know, we do set up these things, so I guess my initial reaction is, okay, that's great, and it only costs us $3,000, and maybe we could get private funding for some of that, but on the flip side of it, it's also an opportunity to, you know, purchase items that we could use in the normal course of our events, or in the case of emergencies. When I think of trailers, I think of the CERT trailer, which has proven to be extremely beneficial for town-wide emergency response to floods and, you know, things of that sort, so that's kind of where I was.
Right, the great guide, the grant guidance in this, in this particular grant is very specific, you, you're not to use these materials for suppression activities. For example, if you buy some hose for this, for this program, you can't say, well, we get a fire, go grab the hose out of the, out of this, the firefighter challenge program. They're very explicit when it comes to that, they don't wanna intermingle the two. If you wanna buy rescue equipment and apparatus, you use, you go apply for the assistance of firefighter grant program. When it comes to looking at strictly fire prevention, they want you to focus on that and make sure that you don't use this stuff for rescue and suppression.
It just seems, it seems to me that, that being the case, I, I can't imagine that we would, we would apply for it for $66,000? I, what, what specifically would we need to buy that would cost even remotely that amount of money?
You have a trailer, you have, I didn't bring those with me, but you have a trailer, you have several ladders, lengths of hose, nozzles, you have gear that, that the participants would wear, helmets, protective gloves, the barricades, you would have the audio system that you would use on the trailer, any other props that, that are part of the program. So it, it does add up surprisingly, everything from a rescue dummy, instead of building this, the rescue dummy that we currently have out of old, worn-out hose that falls apart halfway through the program, we have to put that together. This would help us, we can just have a, a little rescue Randy that we can drag around, that's perfect, perfect for the kids.
So Selectman Fornier can, would volunteer next year to, to do that, if he'd like.
So you have, you have a Randy uniform?
No, call it Saving Steve.
And just bringing up the gear, just on that one portion, we're, we're taking children, schoolchildren, school-aged children, and trying to put them into adult gear, we don't have lots of just gear that's unused, so we're taking gear that has been used and putting it on children that doesn't fit, so this would be age-appropriate sized gear.
We've been taking gear that's in service, and in fact, we've, some of the firefighters, we've kind of like taken their gear for the day and put them in, put them in this program to make it work, the smaller firefighters, anyway.
I have a question, I mean.
I, I, I've heard about this, my son has come back and talking about this, it's like one day, I think it's, they do it one day in, in the school year, is that, is that fair to say?
No, it's just.
I mean, the one where they carry the dummy and Randy.
Yeah, the actual physical part is, is one day.
Okay, so let me just, I mean, not going too far. Is this something, I mean, I look at that, it's not gonna be used quite a bit, is this something that would be involved with other communities, here's the trailer, come get the trailer, I mean, I mean, I'd hate to think that this thing would sit 350 days out of the year.
The success of this program has, has, the word has gotten out. Hookset does a similar program, and we've been in contact with Hookset, because they would like to, like to borrow or use this trailer if need be, and that'd be kind of a selling point in this grant. Also Bedford, Bedford Fire Department has also talked about starting a program like this, you know, as long as we don't coordinate on the same dates, this, this equipment probably would be able to be used by other departments.
Phil, you want to add something?
You mentioned sharing with the surrounding communities, do we know if any other community is also applying? I mean, I'm just wondering, is if we apply, would Hookset be applying, is Bedford applying?
We're the only department that I know of that's, that's looking at this particular program.
But there's no way of knowing really if another community is applying?
Well, yeah, and I guess if I could follow up on that, I guess, and you know, and not to, not to diminish the program at all, I mean, I, I think it's a great program, but I guess I'm just, the question that I have is considering what we're going through in budgets. If Goffstown or Goffstown is applying for this, and we are going to lend this out to other communities, I mean, why is it that Goffstown is applying for it, and we would be lending it out to other communities, and let's say Bedford or Hookset's not applying, and we would borrow it from one of them, it's just, just.
For the grant process to work, for example, Bedford has a safety trailer, and they got it under the same, the same grant, I believe, several years ago, and we borrow that trailer from them, and it's one, it's, it's, when you build, build a program from this, from this grant, I guess the, the grant's been designed so it helps not just one community, they would like it to help more than one, because it is federal funding, and when the opportunity arises to, to lend it out to somebody else, if it's under this grant fund, you, you lend it out responsibly, of course. So we borrow Bedford's trailer, safety trailer whenever we can, and, and we've used it several times on open houses. I'm not really sure how much interest other than Hookset and Bedford would have for programs like this. I know, I believe Bo or Auburn, actually Auburn Fire Department does it with fifth graders, so I think they scale it way back, though, but they don't, they don't do a big program like we do.
That's Nick.
I, I think one of the other things is, here in Goffstown, the fire department had this idea years ago and started to incubate it, and we probably don't have any other communities that are at the same point where we are, where we have done the program year after year, seen the success. You may now start to see other communities requesting either the equipment, or how are you guys doing it, simply because they're hearing the good things about the program and the, and the reviews. This program closes on the 4th of February, my guess is they wouldn't award any grants until midsummer.
I believe they can have, according to the guidance document, they can have all of the awards out there by September, September.
And it's typically a one-year performance period?
Eighteen months, I believe.
So I, I would be okay, and I'm, I'm just speaking for myself, with this, based on getting private donations, corporate sponsors to provide the match money, and then spend up to that, so if, if you get $3,000 in match money, you can do your other 95% federal funding. If you end up with only $1,500 in match money, then, then spend up to that, but I, I do have a concern with, under the budget conditions that we're at, you know, is this a great program, but is it something that's absolutely necessary to spend taxpayer dollars on, and I don't know if I would get to that point.
The, the current, if I may, the current budget for fire prevention is $3,000.
Go ahead.
So I don't, he, I don't think the chief could even hit that target potentially, I, I would agree with that, I think that the goal should be to raise it with, with private funds as best as possible, but knowing that, you know, there is no money really in your budget to make that happen unless you're taking it away from the other things that you do, which are, you know, which you spend every year, so that would be, I would agree with Selectman Campasano, that probably a worthwhile endeavor, but it has, the money has gotta come from another source. Anyone else? Is there a motion? Need a motion, if, if they're, if the board is inclined to authorize the.
Can I, can I just ask a question? In light of the discussion that we've had, and my understanding is this is, is open through the February 5th?
February 4th, this is a competitive, competitive grant process, so everybody in the United States will be applying for this also.
Well, I mean, six and a half dozen or the other, I guess, I just didn't know whether or not the chief might wanna come back, or.
I'll be, I'll be working diligently to look for partner, partners, whether it be private or, or corporate type of, type of sponsors for this program, unfortunately would take time. What I'd like to do is get the approval to apply for it, and of, of course, if we get awarded, or potentially awarded this grant, and I don't have the, the partnership to pay, pay the match, you know, I'd basically be transparent, transparent with the board on this, and we can make a decision whether to accept or not.
When the rail trail community, you, through the town applies for grants from the trails barrels, we have to state on that application the source of our match, does the application you're considering, do you have to be black and white like that and state who's contributing the 5%?
It is, and, and like in this particular case, I'd have to check with finance, but I believe.
So it would have, excuse me, but it would be more than just saying, private donations, you have to list.
No, you can just be generalized.
You could say, a generalized private donations.
Correct.
Okay, and then the, to accomplish that would be on your department to get as much as you could.
Correct.
All right, Nick.
One quick question, currently with the program, do you get any support from any nonprofits or other organizations dollar-wise?
Right now, we do, other than the Lions Club, we get support from them, but they purchase the supporting equipment, so we don't have to physically outlay any money for, for any purchases, so we would approach, be approaching groups like that, a fire rescue association, a firefighter association towards the match of this program.
And don't, there's Walmart, Lowe's, all of those have community grant programs that are very interested in, in programs like this.
Motion, anyone, or no?
Make a motion that we allow the fire chief to apply for the FEMA's fire prevention and safety grant.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Selectman DeVans, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Last item I had was a transfer station schedule for 2011, and it's at 4B in your packets.
Motion, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
I'll be candid, I didn't look at this, I apologize, one second. Typical, all right, I'm good. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those again, you, you and I?
No.
I'm sorry, that's 5-0. Okay, I think at this point, the board will have to go into a recess, and I'm thinking how long, 20 minutes? 20-minute recess, so we'll resume at approximately 7:10. Thank you, Andrew, board is back in, in session. Okay, we're gonna proceed with our 2011 budget finalization, and then we'll talk about our warrant articles. Sue did provide us with materials which reflected our last, the action that we last took.
What I thought you took.
Which we thought we took, and.
I do have a question under the library.
Okay, so here's what my thought is to systematically address this, and then we'll kinda get into the, into the nitty-gritty, but one, hopefully everyone had a chance to just go page by page, just to make sure that what we did was reflected in the additions or the concurrence, if there was concurrence in the budget committee cut, you'll see that there is no board of selectment adjustment, you'll notice that we made some adjustments simply because of, there was differences in our workers' comp rates, which were, came in better than was expected, and also there was, in the CIP debt service, there was also a, an adjustment made. So I, I think that most of these have been captured. My thought process is that we'll, you will hear from Sue a little bit on, on some direction that she, that we want to provide her with regard to the library, and then what I'd like to do is to try to kind of sort this thing out, oh, we have to make a decision relative to our non-union positions, then from there, you know, how we want to proceed with responding to the budget committee and then having that dialogue, so. All right, Sue, so we'll.
If, if you go to the library page. My question was, there are three items the budget committee made adjustments on, below wages, let's see, they are, computers, is it computers? Yep. Electricity. Electricity and library programming.
What page?
Library.
There's no page, it's up in the fire.
About in the middle.
Yeah.
And they had increased those three lines. And I recall the boards made adjustments to wages, but I don't recall what you did to these three lines.
That's Nick. I, I don't recall that we made adjustments. I think what our discussion was that any money that the budget committee put in over and above...
Our budget.
Our budget, we were going to consider that as surplus to be applied to some of those other line items that we said needed to be funded.
So, in effect...
Other budgets.
In effect, we made a decision to say okay to it.
Right.
Just, we didn't...
Then there's no adjustment.
We didn't actively voice it.
But when you say made adjustments...
Well, because she's putting, you're, you're, she's taking out, or essentially we're saying it would be there and be, it would be used in allocations elsewhere.
So it would be left as in the line where it is.
Or it would be similar to what we did in the wages.
Wait, no, no, because, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I would expect how it's being removed at this time is because we went into other lines in, in, in other parts of the budget. So we would have to remove it, correct?
Though, I, I thought what the, what the original, what the motion did was it, it, it just took, and we can go back into the minutes, but I, I think it went right to what our budget was for...
Correct.
The library. Now, and in doing so...
Then I should have a negative number.
That motions would have been negatives.
Correct.
And I also thought that, we said that we would revisit that because we did not take any action on, on the non-union wages, and, and this is, and this is, there's only three items. So we can certainly take action tonight on whether or not we want to restore that or whether or not we want to not restore it. And I say restore it with the budget committees, there's three lines that were there.
Sixteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's probably somewhere in around...
Sixteen hundred dollars.
Sixteen hundred, okay. So...
Sixteen thirty-five or something like that.
More than that, it's eighteen hundred.
Eighteen.
About eighteen hundred. Okay. So, if we could, one of the things that has, you know, changed over the last couple of weeks, and, and budgets are fluid, they do change, we, we, typically when we start setting our budgets, we don't know our guaranteed health insurance rates, and we, and, and different rates come in, and you try to do your best, but as, as you get closer and closer to, and actually now we're in our fiscal year, we do get better numbers. Our workers' comp rate went, went down slightly, and that was a net savings to us, what was our, about $12,000, Sue, overall?
Mm-hmm.
And then obviously the, because of the delay on the Ara project, we won't be paying that back till 2012. So those were somewhat favorable. The other big, I just didn't say big, it's just not huge, but it has an impact on the tax rate, and that is, we are going with a one-half percentage increase in our town valuation. So when we started the process, we went with a no change in the town evaluation. As a board, Selectman DeVanz initiated it, we, we went to our town, our tax assessor to, for us, to give us a, a conservative figure on what our evaluation, our valuation may go to. He came back to us with a one-half percent increase. So that, that will help or ease some things in terms of goals for tax rate purposes. It will do nothing in terms of budget number, but it, but it does in terms of tack rate, tax rate purposes. So, to summarize kind of what happened last week, this sheet was provided to us, okay? So it wouldn't hurt to kind of revisit that. And we had a lot of discussions about, you know, what would it take for us to get to an eight dollar and ninety-five cent tax rate, which is the same tax rate that we have right now. And in doing so, my sentiment was, was that there seemed to be consensus of the board that even if, that there would be a combination of operating budget and special warrant articles that the board was presenting, that would not exceed this, if they were all to pass, would not exceed this eight dollar and ninety-five cent tax rate. There were, not to put you on the spot, but Nick, Nick felt that we should put all of these things out as special articles. I shouldn't say all, but, you know, the, the bigger items. And we, we talked a little bit about that, but I wanted to make it pretty clear that our target was that, whether it be a combination of budget or whether it be, and the special articles, that the goal would be that if every single one of these things passed, it would not exceed eight ninety-five. So that was, I think that's what our, where we were driving towards. Is that fair to say?
My recollection.
Is that fair?
That's my recollection.
All right. So, we have, we have this in, in front of us, and before we get started, because Sue also provided us some information as to what to do with our, I'm sorry, not what to do. My sorry job determined what to do, but, non-union positions. So we're in, we're, we are in the process of four collective bargaining agreements, and now is the time where we must make a decision with regard to our non-union positions. So Sue provided us last week with what some of the costs would be with regard to a variety of different options for us, and that has been reflected on these two pages. So, we have some different options with regard to steps and cost of living adjustments. We also talked about the possibility of some more current life insurance, what's the word I'm looking for?
Increasing the cap.
Increases. And, and also same thing with more realistic dental insurance, that the, that currently our, our non-union personnel, their dental plan, I think covers up to $750. And in order to get, I'll just, in order to get $1,500 worth of coverage...
Uh, $1,250.
I'm sorry, $1,250, I apologize. It would be an additional $4,000 cost to the town for those non-union personnel. Life insurance, again, to increase the cap, typically it pays, it was, right now it paid up to $50,000 of life insurance.
Your salary up to.
It's your salary, up to $50,000. To increase that to, up to $100,000 would be a cost to the, to the town of $1,486. We had asked for those two things specifically. And then I asked Sue today to determine if there was a cost, if there was steps for those that are on steps, and a two percent COLA for those that are off the matrix, what that would, what, what the cost for that would be. So that's kind of where we're at now, and we have to make a determination as to what, if any, increase we would like to do with regard to our non-union position. So I'll entertain any motions or discussions with regard to that. Yes?
If I could, I'll start the discussion, just so I can lay out my position and everyone will know it. I, I did a little exercise this weekend, and I'll be glad to share this with everyone via email, I just finished it sometime today. But I went through 2009, 2010, and our current 2011 Board of Selectmen recommended budget. And I took just each department's salaries and benefits and each department's operating budget. I did not include CIP, which if we look between that, was decreased by eleven percent in 2010 and nearly fifty percent this year, so that's been going down. But I just took the department's operating budget, what each department head has to work with. And I left uniforms, employee development, I left that in the operating budget, I didn't even include that into the salary benefits line. Between 2009 and 2010, our budget, that portion, salaries, benefits, and operating budget, went up four percent. Within that four percent, the wages went up 6.23 percent. Operating budget went down 1.79 percent. Between 2010 and this current budget, that portion, everything, all the departments together, went up one percent, a one percent increase. Wages went up 1.3 percent. Operating budget went up point nine percent. So I think we need to look beyond just saying we're going to have a level budget. We cannot continue to go forward giving two, three, four percent wage and benefit increases at the expense of our operating budget, because at some point, we're going to have people, but they can't do anything. And I guess, what I said last week is that pie is only so big. And if you're a proponent of, you know, every year the budget should increase maybe a percent or two percent so that people are accustomed to that inflationary increase, that isn't possible if your wage and salary line is increasing at two, three, four percent a year, because you just, I mean, it's mathematical, that operating budget's just going to keep smaller and smaller and smaller. So, we can kick the can down the road. I, I think we have great employees, I think we did a very good job this year avoiding massive layoffs. But if anyone's contemplating increases, my suggestion would be, and what I would support is, put it to the voters. Let them decide, because we're, I mean, there's only so much pie, and the operating portion keeps getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm only going to address one thing that you said, and that is, I am not in favor of putting anything out like this to the voters, and I'll tell you why. Because what it amounts to, and it's no disrespect to the voters, obviously you're the ones who, who elect us, and it's not to think that I don't have any faith in you. But what I do find troublesome is that we would be essentially putting our non-union employees into a position of getting a one-year contract. And I, I just think that we do have quite a few of our folks who are non-union, and I, I think it would send a very strong message that they would be better served possibly to be part of a bargaining unit. And we all know that there are costs for the community in terms of time and energy and effort with regard to, you know, bargaining unit negotiations, et cetera. So, whatever we do, whether, I, I would prefer it to be included in our budget, simply for that reason and that reason only, because I, I just think that it would be, it would set a bad precedent that we would, you know, we would be, you know, putting forward a one-year contract. And the other, you know, knowing that we have one of our contracts ratified, we will be discussing the ratification of another later on this evening, and there could very well be no cost increase in, in the first year of, of a contract. We would basically be saying that, you know, one of these contracts might have no cost increase, but yet if we were to give a raise to our non-union folks, there would be a cost, and people would then question that, even though last year, this board made a decision to go from a four percent COLA to a two percent COLA, and our non-union folks absorbed that because they did not have representation, but our union folks did not agree to that. So I, I, I'm trying to be sensitive, you know, to both, so that's where, where I, where I am to that specific issue. So I guess, I hear, Nick, where, where your position is, we have a variety of different measures out there, if we, if we, if we want to do that, if we want to provide an increase, and if so, what that increase would be. And like I said, we have one selectman who's, who's articulated his position and his rationale for doing so. Are there any others who'd like to be heard?
Yes. I believe I spoke to this issue on our last session, and I'd like to maintain the, historically, the non-union wage situation is part of the general operating budget, and it should remain therein. We shouldn't separate it out as a quasi-contract to put before the voters. It's our job to, to determine what the wages are. If we would like to put some portion, whether it's COLA or, I mean, excuse me, steps or COLA into the non-union wage package, it's part of our operating budget. And if we, that's what, it's our decision to, to honor what we want to pay the non-union personnel. If our overall budget is not to our pleasure because of budget committee decisions and then ultimately the voters, our employees will still get what we have put in those lines. And we'll have to figure out what are the lines the, the cost will come out of, but that's, that's our job as, as managers. I simply want to maintain status quo, and non-union are part of general operating funds.
All right. Is there any, anyone else like to be heard? Okay, any action, any recommendation or a motion put forth as to what level of increase any member would like to make a motion on, or if it's, or if there is no motion to not provide any increase, whatever is the board's, your, your inclination, anyone?
I'll start it off, Mr. Chair. There's, I would like to see the two percent COLA, and then the other ones are the life insurance adjustments and the dental insurance adjustments.
Okay.
That's in my motion. What I, what I'm excluding from the motion for others listening in is a, a step increase.
Just clarify, what percentage?
Two percent.
Two percent.
So there would be no, no step increase?
No step.
But there would be a two percent cost of living adjustment across the board?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Only once?
No, second is okay.
Okay, the motion's been seconded. Do you want to speak to your second?
No, I'll just leave it up for discussion.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
I've stated my case, that's all.
Basically, I stated mine, it provides an increase which, for reasons we know about, is compatible with other situations. And it would also be, put everybody on the same sheet for insurance, dental, and life.
Put them on the same?
Well, you're, you're, you're including certain increases to keep, keep the life and dental policies changed slightly.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm, I concur with those changes. So, yeah. So much for my discussion.
Do you have any comments, Phil, or...
No, it's just that they didn't get anything last year.
That wouldn't be correct.
They got a two percent, they got step to...
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Step and two.
At the start of the year, they would get steps and four percent.
Right. If we could just clarify, because last year they did get step and two percent COLA because we reduced it by two.
Right.
And did we adjust the insurance at that time?
Yes.
It was adjusted.
And the co-pay was adjusted. And right now, from, if, if we can speak regarding that, can we speak about, no, we can't speak about...
I'm going to, because I, I think it's...
You follow what I want to hear.
I think it's important to try to...
So people understand what's going on.
Because we're, we're kind of, sometimes we talk in cryptic terms, because we, we're used to it, but, you know, the public is not. Last year, in light of, you know, the budget situation, we had asked our bargaining units to drop from four percent to two percent in terms of their cost of living, and in some cases, we got responses of no. I think in some cases, we didn't get a response, so that was, that was a no. The board, and I know that it was somewhat unpopular, made the unilateral decision for those that are non-union, that we were, were going to provide a two percent cost of living and not the four percent. This board, the history of this board, for some of us is only a year, and for some, it's, it's long, much longer, has tried to historically provide some sort of similarity between compensation and benefits provided by our bargaining units to those who are in our non-bargaining units. Last year was an exception to that, and it did create, you know, obviously, some, some degree of issues. In addition to the going from four percent to two percent on the cost of living... In addition to the going from four percent to two percent on the cost of living, the board also made, made some other unilateral decisions. Another, the, first and foremost, we asked, we shouldn't say we asked, we, we changed the health insurance plans that our non-union members are a part of. And basically, that plan called for higher copays for prescription drugs, higher copays for hospital and physician visits. That resulted in, in a savings to the, to the community. And last but not least, we're also asked for an increased contribution on, on the premium payment. So we started to try to address some of the concerns that Selectmen Campasano made in terms of, we're looking at a progression of wages and healthcare and retirement that are keep on going up and up, and we're trying to, you know, address that in a measured way, not have it all done at once, but try to just address it slowly over the years. Because I think Selectmen Campasano was correct, and he states that the percentage of wage growth and, and the percentage of when you add up wages, benefits, and retirement, all that, that whole total compensation in comparison to our operating budgets is increasing and has to be addressed. So even these, even these small incremental movements do have a positive impact in terms of, a favorable impact in terms of budgets because it's less compounding as time goes out. So what we have now is, you know, we have two of our bargaining units that we, we believe will soon be ratified. One has been ratified, but we will take a vote on ratifying the other one this evening. But our goal was the same type of thing, was to try to reduce, reduce the cost in terms of health insurance, to try to get greater contributions towards premiums, to try to get greater copays, et cetera. Some of the things that are out of our control, retirement is out of our control for the, for the most part because these are rates that are set by the state retirement system, and there has been a shifting around of, of who pays those costs. In fairness to labor towns, you know, it, it's shifted all over, over the last 20, 30 years, and they're always looking for that balance or that sweet spot. And over the last several years, it's been, we call it downshifting. Those in labor would say, well, it's about your, right, your time to pay. However, argument you want on that, there has been a considerable cost in the retirement piece. So when you look at our budgets, it's, it's, it amounts to hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're paying in retirement and other benefits. So that, that was kind of the goal. So what we're trying to do is to try to, you know, pay our, our non-union employees, you know, a competitive wage, but recognizing that times are different, you know. And I, and I think, you know, one of the things that we also try to recognize in a lot of these, our town performance matrix, shall we say, compensation matrix, eight steps, right? So is that fair, eight or nine steps?
Nine.
Nine steps. I apologize. Nine steps, on average, those, they are four percent. So in your first nine years of employment, you're getting a four percent. Then after that, it drops off. You do not get any, any steps. Then there's a thing called longevity, and that means when you hit certain benchmarks in terms of years of service, you get a cash, you know, payment. And that, you know, that goes, increases as more years of service you have, and it's incremental. I think it's every two or three years, you qualify for some additional compensation. So in that, for those people that are off that matrix, that, that those COLA things matter to them, obviously. So that's kind of where we stand, and it's not something that's unusual in town or, you know, any municipal or school, they have these, you know, matrices that, that's how they're, they are. So it goes, going back, that's kind of, Steve, is that a fair synopsis of kind of, you know?
I just wanted to.
No, I think it's a good, I just wanted to try to, you know, let, let the folks out there know that that's, you know, where we're at. If we were, you know, to proceed in this direction, Selectmen Pierce's motion would, would essentially freeze people on their current step, there would be no STEP increase. So there would be no four percent for those that were on the STEP. But what it would provide those folks would be a two percent increase regardless of whether they were due for a STEP increase or not. All right? So in terms of quote unquote "past practices," whether they, in our non-union environment, that would in essence be a deviation because in the past, they have gotten STEPS plus a COLA if there was any. So this, therefore, this would be a, a deviation, and those folks would not be eligible for that STEP increase. It would not impact those who are off the STEP. They would still be getting longevity, et cetera. The other issue with regard to life insurance and dental insurance, the life insurance would assist those folks who are making more than $50,000. It would give them, you know, slightly more life insurance at a cost of $1,486 total for the town. So that's not one person, that's just, that's what the cost is total.
And that's the annualized cost.
And that's annualized cost. And then the dental insurance to go from $750 maximum for dental care, and for those of you that, if you have any dental work recently, it's not, that, it gets eaten up quickly. So in order to, to increase that to $1,500.
$1,250.
I'm sorry, I keep saying that. I'm so, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
To $1,250, that would be a total cost for all, all non-union positions of $4,000. So I hope that provides some sort of summary. If there's anything that I omitted, then, then Phil, anybody want to add in on any of that? Okay, Nick?
Just a question. Would Selectmen Pierce be willing to separate those, his motion into parts? One, the cost of living increases, and the second being the life insurance and dental increases?
Yes, I would.
Okay, would the secondor like to, would also do that?
Yep.
That being the case, the, the motion that now sits will be broken down into two? With the, with the permission of the motioner, I will tackle the first, which will be life insurance and dental insurance. Okay? So we have a motion to increase the life insurance and dental insurance for a total cost to the town of $5,486. Again, that would apply to our non-union positions. That's been, that's been motioned and seconded. Any further discussion?
You said five thousand eight, or you?
Five thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars. And that is an annual cost.
Yes.
Which, for those not reading between the lines, the effect on, this, this would be the total effect on the 2011 budget.
That, yeah, well, when.
Not really.
No. You'd take effect probably April 1st because qualifying event would be town meeting to change it. So you'd have to reduce that, prorate it for the three months that you didn't purchase that amount.
Just for my recollection, the number of non-union is, how many?
Full-time, 55. Part-time, we have 14.
Right, I thought that 56, my mistake.
Now, it depends, not all part-time, they, they don't have.
They don't have those benefits.
They don't have those benefits, so this really impacts the 55.
Right.
So when we, if this motion were to pass and we put dollars back into your spreadsheet here, Sue, we'd put about three-quarters of that amount in.
Correct.
All right.
There'd be $4,114.50.
Thank you.
Say the number again, please. Four thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. If there, unless there's any other discussion, is there? Not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion to increase the life insurance and dental insurance as motioned by Selectmen Pierce signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay, next motion, again, by, made by the same individuals, and that would be for a two percent across-the-board cost of living increase to all non-union positions, and the STEPS would be frozen. Any more discussion on that?
Yeah, just one question, and I apologize, Nick, just, are you, was your concern not, not to have it in the budget, or was your concern the, the increase? Or was it both? I'm just wasn't quite sure. I understood you didn't want it within the budget. I didn't know if you felt differently if we, if it was outside of the budget? If it was an article? Or was it both? I just wasn't.
I, I'm not in favor of putting it in the budget.
Okay. And if, if, then just, so just, just for, so if it was outside, would, would there be a consideration or?
I, then the voters have the choice. Well, yea and nay, I mean, but it's also, we're giving our recommendation to it at some point, yeah.
That's what I'm trying to, trying to, just trying to see if there's a way of maybe looking at it differently.
Yeah, for me, that's a, for me, that's a, we all have our principles and our feelings, and I, we have to respect each other. I, I just, I, I would not put this as a, as an article, so for me, it's either in the budget or, and I, and I highlighted the reasons why. So any other discussion on this? I, I'll just, I'll state that I think that this motion does address some of the concerns that Selectmen Campasano made mention of in the sense that a combination of STEPS and cost of living adjustments does compound your wage growth. There, there is no doubt about it. What I would like to make abundantly clear to this board and to those watching is that we took actions on employees' healthcare, which does cost them more money to go to the doctor, to go to the ER, and to do other things. We've also asked them for greater contributions, and we did that unilaterally.
Also prescription.
And prescription drugs, right? So we did that unilaterally. So the notion that there will be a two percent cost of living adjustment this year could very well be largely offset by increases in their health insurance lines, et cetera. And I make that same argument myself at work where it's, might be a one or percent increase or a two percent increase, and you understand because we, it's a difficult economy, and then you start to see how much your health insurance premiums went up, and you're like, wow, I, I either barely broke even this year, or I lost my purchasing power. And in many respects, I think, you know, the same could be said, that this motion is not, in, in any stretch of the imagination, I think, overly generous. I, I think it's fair in light of the, the economic climate, but I think at the end of the day, we have asked our non-union folks to really cost-share with us, to keep, to really keep these budgets in some sort of working order, recognizing the fact that our ultimate goal for the last couple of years is to try to minimize layoffs and people, you know, people losing their jobs. And I think the, some discussions that I've had with some of town employees is a recognition of that, that, that they understand what the board's position is, they don't like some of these things, but they, they respect it. And Phil, you wanted to add?
Also, we've made changes in the cash outs.
Right, that's another one.
So there are some employees that aren't getting the cash out. And that few people, that's, that's a large change, that's a large amount of money.
I, I just wanted to, you know, portray this as, yes, we are making a very slight increase in some benefit lines, and I think that is to try to, you know, show some deference to our non-union folks. They have, we've long talked about life insurance and dental to try to make that more appropriate given the, the costs that are associated with it. But also, the, this, this motion, when you take it into totality of some of the other things that we have done over the last year or two, is, is appropriate. And, and I think it will address, and it acknowledges a lot of the, the concerns that Selectmen Campasano and many of, many of us share, that wage growth and benefit growth is ever-increasing. This will, this goes towards trying to slow that down to a large degree, in my opinion. And it doesn't, and, and I think the sacrifice, there is sacrifices there for the employee, but by the same token, we are doing our very best to try to maintain the services in the community and not try to add more folks to the unemployment rolls. So that's my say. Anyone else want to be heard? Yes, Nick?
Just a last word. I, I would agree with you if it was a zero-sum game, game, but, but it's not. And we've got to go further than just meeting a zero number. It's a trend that has to be reversed. Because, as you said the last meeting, we've got to be forward-budgeting. And next year, and the year after, in order to, to keep that operating budget from shrinking and shrinking and shrinking, if we raise our operating budget two percent, but salaries go up X percent, we're still in this. And, and at some point, you got to pay the piper.
Right, but I also don't think that you, you know, we say long-term. Last year, we projected zero percent increase in valuation. This year, it's point five percent. I know it's not huge, but, you know, you know, I think we have made some pretty tough decisions over the last couple of years to try to address some of these things. And I can, I don't, I don't, I, I could project numbers out, and actually, I have done some of that. Over the last week, I started to look at what would it look like if we kind of did like the status quo type of thing, STEPS and COLA versus just one or just the other? And you'd be surprised, you know, over the years, how much of an impact that is when, when you have, you know, both, and that number is five, six, seven percent. But when it drops down, I mean, when I look at this, it was not uncommon to see wage growth at, say, four percent with STEPS and COLA, especially if you're giving a four percent COLA. In the last five years, we've given three and four percent cost of living raises for the most part, except for last year. And those, some of that was largely due to some contract negotiations that we did, that the board did, say, five, five years ago, when times were better. So, but when you put those two together, you know, you're at like, let's say, five or six percent wage growth, and then that compounds. And we all, we all know where that's headed. But when you make decisions like this, and now you, you've reduced health insurance exposure, and then you have cut in half that compounding effect on the wage side, that's also key. And the other thing that we can't forget about is that as much as it's our obligation to be as fiscally responsible as possible, we deal in a market. And the market competes with surrounding towns, surrounding businesses, and we, we can't lose track of that. So if, I, I believe there may be communities that have laid off people, I'm not going to deny that. There may be communities that have looked at cuts, but then there are other communities. Our neighbor Bedford, I'm, from what I've read in the paper, did provide a two percent across-the-board cost of living. And that will, so we have to be, you know, cognizant of that, and, and I think, I think this is, given, given the give and take in this, I, I think it's, it's, it's fair.
Just a quick question, Sue. Last year, the state reduced the retirement contribution from 35 to?
For police and fire.
Forty-five percent?
Five percent, yeah.
Five, what, what assumption did we make this year? That they would maintain that same cut, or that they would fully fund retirement?
Oh, I'd have to check. I don't have that detail with me. I'm going to assume whatever we're at now, if we didn't receive any notice, we assume the same.
It's fine.
That's usually what we do.
I, I thought, that's a great question, because that, that's hundreds, that's a lot of money. When we started our budget process, if I'm not mistaken, Sue, I'm not going to hold you to this, but I could have sworn, and that in your assumptions, you said that you kept it at that level.
That's what I recall.
That, that was what I, I can find it.
Would that be in the budget presentation?
Yeah, right in here. I can't, I can't find it in my packet here, but I, I could have sworn that that's what, well, another thing.
You're just talking about police and fire, right?
Correct.
State contribution.
State contributions, right.
Not the rates themselves. We use the latest rates.
Okay. So we, is there any other comments, questions with regard to the motion on the table? All right. So the motion on the table is to provide a two percent across-the-board cost of living increase to all non-union employees with a freeze on STEPS. Not hearing any further discussion. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And nay?
Nay.
Okay, that's four, one. Motion passes. And again, that would also, that would be a full year. Okay.
Because it was calculated from July 1st.
Right. Okay. So we now have some numbers to try to, you know, plug in, and I'm going to go to the library, because that was the only other one that was really impacted. And if you recall, there were two. And if you recall, there were two, two budget areas, PEG, TV, and the library, in which they were increased. And they were, they were increased on PEG TV on the salary and benefit line piece. And so that will now be, that was, that included, they don't get step over there, right?
Where?
And PEG TV. They would potentially?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think one's maxed out.
Okay, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure that whatever motion that we did here is consistent with what is in, was in this, you know, in here. And I don't know if that, if that's the case, in terms of the regular wages.
We already made those adjustments, we brought library and PEG to Selectman's original, which was no steps, no cola.
I understand that. Right, so now we would then add-
Now, they're included in that number.
They would be included in that number, okay.
Yes, because they're non-union.
The other tricky piece is that we do not determine the wages of the library trustees, for the library personnel, because the trustees determine that.
Right.
Within the budget.
Within the budget.
Right.
So, we have to somehow communicate to the trustees, which I will, if you could, would you mind letting?
I, I can let them know.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we still have a few other areas. There was three specific lines in the library budget that were increased by the budget committee, and I'd like to just discuss those for a minute. The first one was in computers and communications equipment, and that was an increase of seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The next one was in electricity for three hundred and thirty-two. And the last one was in library programming for seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And I, I'm going to start off by making a motion that we do include those in our, we do include those additions in our final budget. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
Could, could you clarify that?
Yes.
Isn't, isn't that what we did last time?
No, we technically took them all out, Nick.
I, I, that's not what's reflected in my spreadsheet, because I wasn't sure about these three lines.
She wasn't, Sue wasn't sure, so at the end of the day, this would remain.
Okay.
Right? So, the motion-
It's as it was printed.
In effect, we're saying, okay.
We're saying, okay, to this, to this here. Let me just try to, let me clarify this.
Yeah, can I just, go ahead, I'll-
Let me, if I just could clarify, our original motion, in my opinion, would have retaken these three items out, okay? Sue went with the assumption that that's not what we had meant.
Right.
So, my motion essentially would affirm what, you know, what is on this sheet right here, which would be, it was included back in. So, it wouldn't change this at all, the sheet.
The way it looks, the way it looks now.
The way it looks now, my motion would keep it that way it is. If, if it got voted down, then, and the board wished to remove those items, then these would then be in the negative column for those things.
And the original piece when we did this the last time was, was, was with the concept that when we were going, when we had the budget committee's number, we were looking at some of the changes they made and being, you know, down or up, and the cases, in this case, it's been up. And we were, when we were looking at saying, we, we thought some of these might be better suited in other places where adjustments were made down. So, essentially, you're saying with, with what we did last week, you would increase it by roughly the eighteen hundred, or eighteen hundred dollars.
Correct?
Yes.
Right.
Just some clarification, because last week, when we went through this, I totaled up all of the areas that were surplus, including the debt service that was included in the budget but not needed. And that came out to about a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Then we went through all the different lines and we said, these should be reinstated.
Right.
That came up to about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, so, and Sue and I had a difference of about twenty-eight hundred.
And eighteen of that was in libraries.
So, I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing here, because my assumption and my numbers were based on these numbers staying in the budget, but being used as, on the surplus side.
Right.
Someplace else, sorry.
So, we're not changing that.
Well, he's looking to do that now.
I thought we did that.
That's not his question, that's not his question.
Yeah, I-
Well, maybe, maybe it's my misunderstanding here, but I just want to go. This was, when we went and, and we looked and we made adjustments to the other lines prior to coming to the library. In other words, we, we put some, we put increases, I remember the phrase, that some of the reductions they made, we adjusted them back up. And we adjusted them back up, looking at that bottom figure with the concept here that there was thirty thousand dollars here that, that we said, hey, we're going to allocate it in another spot.
And that's what I thought we generalized, and we said there was twenty-nine thousand dollars in library.
Correct.
And that's surplus money, and we're going to, it's going to stay in the budget, but we'll use it towards filling some of those.
So, by Sue taking, you know, deducting it because we put it in other lines, we'll, we'll be, we'll be roughly the two thousand short because of these three lines weren't done.
And that may be the difference, or part of that difference, because I included those in that surplus.
That's all, I'm just trying to clarify what this is.
Now, here's where it gets a little bit sticky, okay? But, and if I'm wrong, then let me know, but-
Where are you?
I'm in the library.
In the library, okay.
Again, let's just look at the wages, okay, and now, the twenty-six, nine eighty-eight, the big, big nut there is the fifteen, three eighty for regular wages. Is that added back that some time that was lost? You follow what I'm saying? That is not just a two percent or four-
That wasn't two percent in steps?
No way, I don't think so. I'd be very surprised. I'll double-check, I-
I'm not sure with the fifteen, three.
One percent is four thousand.
What?
If you look at their-
I'll double-check, I do think it's around three, three or four.
Their, their salary line-
The Selectman's, the Selectman's budget in salaries reflects no steps, no cola.
Okay, so add two percent to that.
Well, there's, there'd be steps too.
That'd be eight thousand dollars. Well, say it's four hundred thousand dollars, two percent of that would be eight thousand. So, that would be just the two percent. So, then, there might be steps or, I don't know, let me just check.
Wasn't that, oh, you know what it was? I think it was a full-time person going from forty to thirty-five hours.
Right.
Still full-time, but it is going forty to thirty-five for some reason.
But what I'm trying, but you hear where I'm at, I don't want to give the, the, we essentially, as Nick said, we took twenty-six thousand, nine eighty-eight, right? Off the table. And the only thing that we have added back in there, technically, are the three line items that we just mentioned, right? And the, the two percent wage increase.
I have to go up and get my library handout. When they submitted their budget, what did they include for staff? And, and then what did the, the Selectman cut?
I, I would keep it simple and say that their budget is six hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Take that difference between that and the budget committee's number of six ninety-one.
But then you have an adjust-
That's the difference.
You have an adjustment because of a benefit selection that you have to add in about five thousand dollars, which is reflected here.
You take that off of the surplus?
Oh, we, I, hold on a second, I think I got this. Four? No, I don't have it, sorry. I don't have it, I thought I did. What is it you're looking for? I was looking for the library's budget presentation, and I, I thought I, I had, I did have what the level funded zero percent increase with a ten percent cut, but I don't have-
My notes were very detailed. I got a slide presentation, Sue.
Yeah. But I guess I'm confused in that if, if our budget, our budget took all of those things into account.
What?
The budget presentation.
Right.
That was given to us, and we came out with six ninety-one, one oh two.
Hold on, six ninety-one?
Right. The budget committee saw fit to provide more money and brought it up to, I'm sorry, reverse that.
You, you were six sixty-four.
Ours was six sixty-four, one fourteen. The budget committee increased it to six ninety-one, one oh two.
So, they essentially gave them what the library-
Six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars more.
Right.
So, that's a surplus.
Right.
Sue, you mentioned there was a five thousand?
Increase in benefit line.
So, our number of six sixty-four at a minimum has to increase by that five thousand dollars.
Right.
What was the exact number?
Four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Oh, is it really?
Yeah.
Okay, now, so that increases, then on top of that-
Not increases, decreases the surplus.
That's what's getting everybody confused.
I'm not talking about decrease, I'm just talking about what the number should be.
Okay.
So, the number would be six sixty-four, one four, one fourteen, plus the four nine 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 nine, okay? Plus, the action that we just took tonight, which was a, the two percent increase in the wage across the board, cola only, not step, and any of the, whatever, in the school amounts it is for the other two things.
So, that number taken from the six ninety-one would give us what the potential surplus is.
You got it.
Now, this, the library said, when they presented their six sixty-four, one fourteen, no increases in lines outside personnel cost, loss of seventeen staff hours. So, their number reflected a loss of seventeen staff hours. Now, is that because of the hours they're open, or is that?
They reduced some hours.
Right, I think that was based on direction from their, the library trustees.
Okay.
And the budget that they needed to come in it.
So, we're not going to really have a rock-solid number in terms of what that surplus number is, because we really don't know, I mean, we, we kind of can figure out that on the wage side, that's going to translate into eight thousand dollars, right? Two percent of almost four hundred thousand. So, it's probably going to be somewhere between, say, eight and ten thousand dollars. Is that fair to say? So, um-
If you say nine, that'll probably include the life insurance and-
Right, exactly. So, if we want a rough ballpark and we shoot for nine for wages and, and the, the other insurances, then add the five for the, so it's, you're adding fourteen thousand to that.
Six seventy-eight, one one three, roughly.
Six seventy-eight, one one, right, three, minus-
Sorry, about twelve thousand, nine eighty-nine.
Twelve thousand, nine-
Tell me what you want to achieve and I can get you that.
I'm totally confused, because you're, you give me your parents, you're trying to manage to some bottom-line number in the library, and I would just assume that we make a decision on these three line items, computer, electricity, and programming, and whether we want to stick with the budget numbers that they added a little bit into those lines, or should we?
Right, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that it's, it's a-
Just, just make a simple decision on these three items, and don't do all the mathematics on the two percent increase.
Okay, I guess the point that I want to be, to make here, though, is that it is not simply these three line items, it, it's really more four, because the, the, that first line item, which is the, the regular wages, David, that also includes, if you look at the library's budget, okay, which, what they presented was four hundred and thirteen thousand, zero ninety-three.
Yes.
Right? And then, when it came to the board of Selectman, we went to three ninety-seven, seven, one, three. Now, is that simply because we, we took out steps? And, and if that's the case, Sue, then that, that very well may be. Do you think that's what it is?
Well, I'm just, I've got her spreadsheet when she presented her budget, and, let's see. Unfilled seventeen hours, library assistant position as of July twenty-first, two thousand and ten, and a reduction of forty hour position to thirty-five. And that was the-
But that was part of-
To level funded, I guess.
But that was their budget.
Three ninety-seven.
Okay, so I think we have to, let's go the assumption that when-
Three ninety-seven was a level funded budget, no steps, no cola. Three ninety-seven, seven thirteen.
Okay, gotcha. And what did the four thirteen, oh ninety-three represent? That's my question. I, I'm assuming that it represented steps, uh, two percent and steps.
Yeah, right.
They went back to the, the-
So, the department head request.
To the request when the trustees and the department head came here.
Okay, so I'm-
We, we took out all non-union.
Right, I know that.
On it, so that it had no impact, we weren't going to discuss it at that time.
All right.
Correct.
So, I will then, that, that being the case, let's just have a, for the sake of clearing, clearing it in the record, that those three items, the computers and communication equipment, six, seven sixty-eight, the electricity increase of three thirty-two, and the library programming increase of seven sixty-seven, I'll make a motion that, that those budget committee additions remain, that we, we endorse those three additions.
Second that.
Okay, so, but you got that?
Got it.
You ha, Nick, our prior motion did not reflect what's on this page.
Right.
It just simply did not.
So, now it reflects this page.
Wage portion of the library.
Right.
We did not, our motion did not-
Last, last week, it did not?
It did not, it, it took them all out, took everything out.
It did, but the paper didn't come back this way.
It reflects yours, not mine.
That's, yes, that's correct.
The paper reflects it.
No, no, so that's what Nick's saying, he goes, the reflection last time was to have those three numbers removed.
Removed.
To be removed.
But on this sheet, it shows that they were not removed, so I'm just trying to take the motion-
So, this is going to be consistent with everything else we did last Thursday?
Yes.
If we re-
Thank you.
Now, the only place that we're going to have a difference is on the employee wage and the, all the benefit lines, because what we, the two percent does not, it reflects a lower amount, probably, than what's in there, depending on what steps and cola they were originally budgeted at.
We know that they budgeted two percent cola, but they did also budget step. Fair to say, okay? So, I got a motion, I made the motion to include those three items back, is there a second?
Yeah, Dave Pierce, second.
Dave Pierce, all those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay?
Aye.
Your guy. So, that's five, zero, okay, so, that's that. And to Nick's point, I think it'll probably work out to be about a fifteen thousand dollar quote-unquote surplus, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Twelve ninety-nine.
Yeah.
Fire, fire operations. There's a line called legal services, and I recall from our last session, we wanted to revisit that amount of two thousand dollars.
Can you?
Right.
One, account number?
Four, five, oh, two, oh.
Forty-five, zero, twenty. Legal services.
Did we not restore that?
No.
No.
No. We passed by and said, let's discuss that.
Fire operations, legal services.
Right.
On my sheet, it shows that we cut, it was cut by the budget committee fifteen hundred, and then we put back fifteen hundred.
But there was a comment that we wanted to revisit to confirm if that was a, a good number. Right, and the reason we wanted to wait until tonight to find out where we were with CDH.
Oh, right, 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 right.
So, I say, you leave it alone, right?
There's no need to.
Leave it, leave it the way it is. You've restored it.
We will need that two thousand dollars in the line.
Because it'll be next, next year.
That was your point.
Yes.
So, that will remain the same.
So, the fact that we restored fifteen hundred is a good-
Is appropriate.
Appropriate call, in light of that.
Okay.
A good justification.
Okay, so, we clean up all the housekeeping stuff. So, now, we get to the, kind of like the nitty-gritty, and I want to try to go back to what we did last week. And I would like to see some sort of a combination of, of operating budget and special articles that would get us to a level tax rate should everything pass, including our, our contracts. Now, without going into too much detail on, on both of the, well, one has been ratified.
But there's zero impact on both for sure.
There is a zero impact in the first year on both. As a matter of fact, on one, there may even be a savings, right? So, that will, so that's, that is, and are there any petition articles that have any cost impact that we're aware of?
They're not appropriation, at this point in time, first of all, the deadline is tomorrow, okay?
Do we have any?
At this point in time, we have three petitioned articles.
Money articles?
They're not appropriation articles, but one will have an impact on your tax rate. It is a disability exemption article.
Okay. Okay, so, for all intents and purposes-
Oh, and the other one is revolving on for police, so that could have an impact if you're adjusting your operating budget as a result, but-
Okay, well, let's just, for all intents and purposes, let's just stick with what we have in terms of our, our articles, our money articles. And I just want to try to get my arms around, Sue, we, we talked about getting to a combination of budget and special art- and special articles in the amount of twenty million, forty thousand dollars to achieve a level townside tax rate. Is that still the same?
Yes.
Uh, nothing's changed there. So, with the action that we've taken tonight, I want to, um, do the simple math here. When we, um, voted in on the first motion with regard to non-union employee benefits for life insurance and dental, that was an increase then of five thousand, uh, but then we did the seventy-five percent deal.
Yeah, so it's four thousand.
So, it's four thousand, one hundred, fourteen dollars and fifty cents, all right?
Yes.
That's the cost of that decision. And the cost of a two percent, um, cost of living for all non-union frozen on steps came out to forty-two thousand, forty dollars. All right, um, we took action on those, um, those three library things, that, 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 that's-
That-
That doesn't matter, it's moot, because you've already, you didn't figure that in, so that, um, and I don't-
And I'd already figured in the five thousand for the extra benefit for the library also, so that was already in there.
And that was already figured in.
Yep, and so, the only changes that you've made tonight was to add for the non-union. So, your budget right now is looking like nineteen million, nine hundred, eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars, including your special articles.
All of them?
Okay, um, so-
And that, and I, did I prorate this? No, I didn't even put the prorated one, so it's a little less.
Five, one, four. Where did you come up with, Sue, again? Could you repeat that number?
Let me give you-
Nineteen million, nine hundred, eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Now, it's, with prorating it for nine months for the dental and life, it's nineteen million, nine hundred, eighty-four thousand, one hundred.
Nineteen?
Million, nine hundred, eighty-four thousand, one hundred.
Now, let me just, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, when you come up with this number, how accurate is this in light of the fact that the number on the library included, uh, four percent COLA?
No, we took that out, we backed it out.
We backed it all out.
And then we added to it.
Right. So, it's, it is accurate?
No, 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 okay.
It never included four percent COLA, it included steps and two percent.
Okay, but we don't have steps in, so-
Right.
My question is-
When we're in the library, my sheet reflects-
Nothing.
Backing out to the selectmen's budget number for personnel in the library.
Which was no steps, no COLA.
And then, in this general increase for non-union, we increased it two percent in the dental and the life for their full time.
Okay, so, by increasing, you were able to give an accurate number, what you did, that's, that was my, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So, um, one of the, so-
This includes all articles?
Yeah.
Yes, but let me just explain that two of your articles, when you look at this cover sheet here, two of your articles is assuming it's in the operating budget. I didn't count them twice as special articles.
And I understand that, I understand that.
So, I just wanna go back to what we started off by saying about an hour ago, is that, uh, I think consensus of the board was whether they were in the budget or whether they were outside the budget. I think we were kind of all in agreement that we were trying to get to this eight ninety-five or, or less. Um, and then, you know, there was, we had discussions last week about, you know, which one should we keep in the budget, which one should we not keep in the budget, and we had four primary, one, four primary expenditures, the, the replacement of the, uh, the annual replacement of three police cruisers. We had, um, the, uh, solid waste, replacement of the, of the current solid waste, uh, vehicle. Uh, we had the, um, road program, five hundred thousand dollar cut, that the, additional cut that the Budget Committee made, and then, we also, there was, what was the, was the, the fire?
Fire truck.
The fire, the fire engine. So, we, last week, we made the decision to put the fire truck and the, um, solid waste vehicle out as special articles, and our, our, um, at that time, last week, we talked about putting both the road program and the police cruisers back into the budget and making a motion at the deliberative session, uh, keeping in mind that if we would have a place, harl, it would be, still be a special article in case that was unsuccessful. In light of some of the activity that we did here, and in trying to, you know, provide some semblance of, of compromise perhaps, you know, with the Budget Committee, and maybe even what, where you were going, um, I would like to really try to go back to the good old days where we had give and take with the Budget Committee, and allow me to go back to the Budget Committee at their next meeting, and, uh, just indulge me in this thought, to say, okay, um, we will agree to put the road program out as a special article, but we would like respectfully request that the, that the Budget Committee, um, go with, uh, an amended budget, uh, knowing that it will be slightly higher than what you have approved, but it would achieve a result of it being, uh, below, uh, the current tax rate, if all articles were to pass. Um, that, I think that still provides, um, again, I think it's a, a very, very fair compromise. I think it allows the voters to vote on the three, on three major, uh, expenditures, road program, um, uh, the solid waste vehicle, and the fire truck. Um, it does highlight, and the importance for us, that we believe the police cruiser replacement is something that is an ongoing three every year. Um, I think we, we've compromised on the, the dump truck with, in terms of the refurbishment of that with a body, and by the same token, we're asking for a little bit of compromise on putting back some of the monies, uh, that the Budget Committee cut, you know, so, I think, you know, developing budgets is a little bit about compromise, and, and I'd like to try to go in that direction with the Budget Committee. In the worst case scenario, they could say no, um, but in the, maybe something that they would do. Um, I, I think, I think that's a fair compromise, so.
Could you clarify, I'm sorry, could you clarify one thing? You were saying you were gonna ask the Budget Committee to, to agree to put the road program out?
Well, no, we would, we would agree to put, also to have three separate articles. It would be the road program-
The Board of Selectmen would agree.
Yes, the Board of Selectmen would agree to put the road program-
Out to a special article.
As special article, separate-
And ask for their agreement on what?
On, on our revised operating budget, which I think might be about a hundred and something thousand more than theirs. But in light of our increased valuation and some other changes, the net effect is not more, and that's not an increase in the tax rate.
Okay, so, last week, we were putting two into the operating budget.
Correct.
The road and plan and the cruisers, and you're suggesting now, just put the cruisers in the operating budget.
Put the cruisers in and ask for concurrence, ask for concurrence with the Budget Committee to keep that in the operating budget.
Okay, got it.
Then put the road program as a separate article with the other two. Um, I, I, I just think it's a fair give and take, and it still achieves, I think, and I can't speak for the Budget Committee, but I think what there, what, there was some, um, they, they did make one point eight million, you know, dollars in, in, in cuts, but if all of these things were to pass, it would still result in a lower tax rate, uh, to the community, and I think that's a fair thing, and, and-
On the, on the town side.
On the town side, right, I can't, we can't help what happens on the school side, so.
I understand, I, I, and I can't speak for them either, I think there's somewhat of a process also that some of the town side was adjusting for school side, I think, also.
There was probably, it was, there was, there were a couple of members who may have gone in that direction, but, um, the other thing that, is that, you know, as we go through this whole process, um, if, if there is some agreement there, obviously, the board, I would think, would, would recommend, um, you know, some of these special articles, if not all of them. The Budget Committee may choose to recommend or not recommend, um, and then ultimately, the voters will decide what they, they deem as, uh, if, if those purchases are important. So, I think it tries to strike a, some sort of even, even compromise on, on your position, Nick. And again, really, the only difference there would probably be the police cruisers. Um, everything else, all the big ticket items are, are now outside of the budget with the caveat that they would be put back in the budget if they were to pass, so.
I just have a question. Sue, on your nineteen million, nine hundred thousand number,
Yes.
Does that include the pumper tanker at, um-
Five hundred and fifty thousand.
Not four oh eight?
No, cause that's the revenue side.
So, it's gross appropriation. Okay, that's-
Cause they have a hundred and fifty more in there.
No.
Right.
Uh, you think so?
What?
No.
No, I'm saying right to Nick.
Right, I'm talking about the tax rate. It is included in the revenue.
Right.
That's the key.
Right.
So, even though that it's gross appropriated on the, on the budget side, in order for the tax rate calculations to be that eight ninety-five, it is included, money from that cap, should that pass, it is included in the revenue to achieve that eight ninety-five tax rate. So, that's my, that's my suggestion. Um, I can't, I don't think that it hurts to go to the Budget Committee, in, and, uh, ask for concurrence from them. I think it, I think, uh, it does show some good faith on our part that, you know, we have made a lot of different changes. We've looked at this thing line by line, and, um, I think it shows good faith to the community, too. I, I, I just-
When is, when is the next Budget Committee meeting?
A week from, it'll be after the public hearing.
Tuesday.
But what I can do, Tuesday.
Third Tuesday.
Not a week from tomorrow. Um, but what I can also do is, like, I, I sent you guys a copy of, of the actions that we took, and I can also kind of, you know, put that in there, or at least, um, articulate what we're trying to get at, um, either in writing. I don't know, tomorrow, we got a, we got an email from Dan, um, and basically, um, he did not want boards to speak. I, I, I think that's kind of what I got, or department-
I did talk to him afterwards, and I told him how you were-
What did he say? Would we have the opportunity to, if we were to go this route, would I have the opportunity as chair or another member be able to stand up and say, um, we think that with some, uh, some slight compromises here, we may be able to go in with a budget where we have concurrence between the Board of Selectmen and, and the Budget Committee?
Y- yeah, I-
Or no.
I was talking to him about what you were doing, about moving things to special articles and, and trying to get as close, because I said, you know, where we're really different is CIP. So, he says, well, we're open to hearing that.
I know, but are they open to hearing it at the public hearing, or are they open to hearing it because?
I, I can, um, have that discussion with him.
Okay, because, yeah, either or, um, I-
So, right now, your budget, the total operating budget, if you vote to do this, to have three articles, as special articles, and just leave in the cruisers, the difference is, uh, between you and the Budget Committee, be a hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars in the operating budget.
Right.
And most of that is the cruisers, a hundred and one thousand.
Right, and-
I, I don't follow that.
Take the road program out.
We added forty-two thousand tonight.
Oh, yeah, that's down at the bottom. Yeah, I've got that down at the bottom. It has to be distributed, redistributed up there.
And, and you mentioned three.
Hold on a second. Is that number still the same?
Our bottom line budget's the same, but no, the hundred and nine thousand, we'd have to add, uh, the ones that are down at the bottom here, like Nick said, um, forty-six thousand.
So, it'd be about a hundred and fifty-five thousand, that would be-
Right.
Okay.
Asking to increase the budget.
So, we'd increase the budget by a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and a lot of that is offset by this, by the valuation piece? Is that what's offsetting this?
Hundred and fifty-six thousand, one fifty-
Okay.
Is the difference.
And the cruisers were one oh, one oh one?
Right.
Yes, David.
Did, did we resolve in our last session not to have a special article on the, uh, DPW truck?
Which one?
Two hundred and fourteen thousand.
That's correct. We, we decided that we were going, we, we headed-
Rehear it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, what is everyone's, I don't know, I'm just, that was, I threw my idea out.
Yeah, that gets you a lot closer to where the Budget Committee wants to be, and basically, the biggest, biggest difference is, like you said, the cruisers.
So, right now, officially, we have, we would desire that four hundred and ninety-nine thousand to be added into the operating funds, so it'd be a motion to, uh,
Just, just-
Say, okay, with their position.
Well, I mean, it, you know, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is-
And announce that we would like it as a special article.
But to get an understanding of this, I understand we are from a budget number, and then we pull the road program out, and then it's gonna be this, this vote on it, and, and let's just say that there's, there's this overall support that hit from the budget, and we're good. Then we're gonna go and look at these separate articles, and I'm going to, and I, I can't tell you how they're gonna vote, but one might say they might not support a one point five on the, on the road program, and you might have an article out there with non-support. I mean, that would, could be a possibility, or only a strong possibility.
This, this would be, excuse me, it would be a special article just to add a half million.
The special article would be to, uh,
Increase.
To, to increase the road program, and then what, you know, if we were to do that, the Board of Selectmen would then-
Can we step back?
Yeah.
My understanding, if I'm wrong, let me know here, I thought that the, the Budget Committee wanted to have a separate article for the road program.
No.
No, just for the difference.
Just, just-
Just the difference?
But, well, I can't even speak for that, cause-
Well, we can't say that.
We can't say that.
Can't say, cause we don't know that.
They left, they left something, yeah.
They left one million dollars in, in the budget for-
So, we're saying we're looking at this half million dollar article, would they support it or not support it?
Correct. And my point is this, is that if we go this route, I think, you know, if we're going to be, you know, true to our word here, it's very important that we make it very clear to the community that this board is going to support a warrant article, let's say, the road program, to increase it by five hundred thousand. So, if there's an amendment to go to a million dollars, we are voting no, and we are strongly suggesting that we, that, that be voted down. Do you understand?
Right.
Does anybody got that? Because our target was a level funded tax rate, and that would be, um, very wrong of us to endorse, um, a, any other type of an amendment. And I think that's critical, you know, in terms of, you know, uh, you know, that whole trust factor, that, you know, if you're gonna do this, you have to, you have to advocate for what that position is, and not, and not, uh, not support anything that, that deviates from that. So, I know I've, it gets us pretty darn close to the, to the Budget Committee number. It stills allow the voters to vote on the bigger ticket items, and, um, I don't know, maybe it tones down some of the emotions of, of things to a degree.
Hopefully, that does show, uh, a spirit of, uh, cooperation and compromise.
But at this time, I understand you, if you do this, you still want me to give four special articles, including the cruiser as a special article in case you're not successful getting it into the budget.
Right, cause we have no choice, right?
Yeah, time, yeah, time runs out tomorrow.
Now, can we poll them once?
I believe you can poll them before you post the warrant. After you post warrant, you can't.
Right, so we can poll them.
So, you've got till the last Monday in January to poll it.
Okay, so there, all four will be there as a placeholder. If we get concurrence from the Budget Committee, we can then poll the other two.
Well, yeah.
On one, I apologize. We're polling the cruiser.
Right.
Right, okay. Um, I'm not sure we need it, well, we might need it. Yeah, we, we need motions on this, but is there, anybody like this idea? Not like this idea? I'm just trying to, it's right now, as it stands now, we would be going in with, um, we would be incorporating, based upon our actions last week, we would be incorporating the road program and the, and the police cruisers into our budget. We were making an amendment to the Budget Committee's number, um, and I guess I'm trying to-
My question also then would be, what would you consider support?
What do you mean, what do I consider support? Well-
I mean, you know, what's the best way to put it?
A majority of the Budget Committee.
I know, well, I mean, are we just looking for a simple majority? I mean, in other words, they're many-
I can't-
I, I know, I understand, I understand you can't speak for them, you can't vote, I'm just saying for us as a body, cause eventually, you're gonna have-
I would, I would-
You're gonna have, you're gonna have, uh, on the end, if, if there's support or non-support, and you're gonna have a count on the support.
It's a simple majority, uh, because that's the number that gets brought forth to the deliberative session, so that's a simple majority, and there are no recommendations made at that time. The recommendations are made after the deliberative session, whether or not, um, you know, what, what appears on the ballot.
So, if there's changes.
Right, so they recommend before-
Recommendations must appear on the warrant that's posted the last Monday in January.
Right, at the deliber- Right. Right.
If there's any successful amendments at the deliberative session, they can change the recommendations.
Then they can change it, then they, then they can change it, right. Well, so I'm looking-
That's the concern.
So, I'd be looking for a majority.
That's, you fall, you fall, that's the concern, unless then you sit there and things get changed.
I think it's a fair compromise, I really do. I think it shows, I think it shows a lot of good faith, and I think it's had to show a little bit of good faith on their part to do it, too, so.
And basically, the difference between your operating budget under this scenario and theirs is the one oh one for the cruisers and about rounding fifty-five thousand and other things.
Right.
That's pretty close, in a, in that kind of a budget.
In a twenty million dollar scenario situation, it's not- Thoughts?
I don't know, I thought I was clear, that I, I thought I was in a good spirit of-
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
Cooperation, compromise.
Anyone else? David, are you okay with it? You're all right with it. Nick, is that something, you're still not okay with it?
No, and, and only because my original position was that we put these things- No, and, and only because my original position was that we put these things out as special articles. Were including the two percent increases that I voted against. So, you know, in principle, I can't vote for it.
Okay. Steve?
I mean, at this point, you're gonna go forward, next, yeah, what you're looking for is to go next, meet with them next Tuesday. And I guess where I sit is, I'd like to know what the extent of that support from the Budget Committee. I'm not so much at a simple majority. I'm looking for is if everyone's really.
And I think.
I mean, that's, that's where I sit.
You'd like to watch the meeting or come that night? You certainly can.
I mean, we will. But I, I realize we're not taking.
I would, I would think you have to present this at the public hearing or, or let the budget.
Right, yeah.
You, you need to let them know at that time.
Okay. Need to let the public know more than just here on this side.
No, I, I understand it. So I'm, you know, I mean, honestly, I, I, I agree with this going forward and trying to, you know, obviously corrupt and trying, trying to come, come in a situation where we both, the Budget Committee and us support it, but I'd like to know how much, in other words, in our case, I can tell you how much, we, we'd probably be supporting it roughly a four one type vote. I can, you know, looking around.
Nick wants to be there, but he can't, I think, but.
But, but. But I mean, so I, I'd be curious.
He's close. You're, you're like at a half vote.
I guess I'm saying, I would like to, I, you know, I would like to think that they're, they're, you know, a stronger majority.
It's like four and a half to point five right now, so.
I know. Okay, so, but I'd like to see if they were at a, at a strong majority, because it would, it would just make me feel a little different about the process.
But we, I, I, we don't know that.
Okay, I know, I know. I'm, I'm, I can, I'm fine and I'll sit back and wait.
Okay. Okay, so that's how, Sue, you'll speak with Dan and, and maybe if, if he's okay with it as the Chair, then if he'll allow us to present that on a Wednesday night or maybe Thursday night?
Certainly ask. Thursday.
They're planning on Thursday.
So, okay. So we've, we'll, we'll head in, in that direction. I'll just need to get some updated numbers.
Yep.
Okay. And, and then also, in fairness to the, to the Budget Committee, they have not met since this revised half percent increase in valuation. They have not met since the difference, you know, the, some of the changes, the IRA thing and some others. So I think that.
And remember, early on, you had discussed the possibility of using more fund balance.
Right.
But we kept it the same. Remember you had talked about possibly going to seven fifty.
Right, we did talk about that. Right.
Yeah, but I think part of us, we were concerned about the outcome following year too.
Right, exactly.
Because we didn't have that going back.
But I'm saying that.
Punishing it.
I, I feel somewhat comfortable going in this direction because if every single one of these articles passes and the budget passes, we will be below that rate and we will not go in anymore into our reserve fund balance.
It's good to have a stable tax rate and not have a roller coaster ride from you.
Right, up and down and all this stuff. And then the other thing is that, I mean, I'm, I would love to make mention of this at the, the public hearing, is that we do have a pretty healthy fund balance, you know. We have not, you know, we have, we have a really, we have a good bond rating and we, you know, we've, fiscally, we're pretty, we're pretty good, you know, we, we pay as we go here, you know.
And I was gonna say that, because that's what traditionally we've done, is paid as we go.
I mean, it's not like we have, we have, you know, taken so much money out of fund balance that, you know, we went from, we, we've, we've decreased it by thirty, forty, fifty percent. If, if anything, we've added to fund balance over the, over the last few years.
We're actually in better shape than most towns.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
But I think that sometimes it doesn't get, you know, you know, that doesn't get talked about a lot, you know, but.
But, you know, tomorrow night, or Wednesday night, it's not a time for debate. I agree with Dan on that. It's a time to present concerns and you can present your concerns and ask.
Or present an alternative or ask for consideration. Okay. I mean, I hope, hopefully though, Dan will allow us to do that. If not, then it'll happen on Tuesday. And obviously, the, I'm sure that there may be those watching tonight or I'm sure word will get out. I'll try to send them a recap of here's what we're looking to do anyway, so.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to kind of go over some of these petition warrant articles now?
Yes, there's three right now and I've only gotten one supervisor checklist in to validate that there's twenty-five signatures. That requires two of them to do it, so the other one couldn't get in today to do that. But one of them is the disabled exemption.
Do you have copies of that, Sue?
I, I don't.
Okay.
Or do I? Actually, I started typing up a draft warrant for you and then I got that one in. The one thing, so why don't I pass a draft warrant out?
A veteran's situation.
No.
No.
Disability.
Dis, disability across.
Exemption, right.
As appropriate by Social Security?
Yes, title, what is it? It's, I think it's quoted right in here. It is Article fifteen right now in your, on your draft warrant.
Oh, it is updated, okay.
Somewhat updated, I think, or.
Here we come.
Did you move the order?
Article fifteen, yeah.
All the, and now, now we don't have to worry about it. Well, maybe.
Now.
How does this compare to our elderly?
Well, it's not so much that also, but are these amendable? I'm not sure the numbers, right?
Yes, they are. The numbers are amendable. What you will have in, if this prevailed, you, you will have a situation, when they turn sixty-five, they're gonna go to whatever the exemption level is for sixty-five under the elderly exemption. And that's gonna be less than what they're proposing here. So you, it puts us in an unusual situation. Typically, when you see, and, and some towns have that unusual situation, but typically, the best.
So this is triggered by Social Security disability.
Right. On to Title Two or Title sixteen.
Does this follow a statute or anything?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Is it, is it correct, correctly followed or?
Yes, yes.
Seventy-two.
Our income limits for the elderly, single, single person is thirty-five thousand and married is fifty thousand.
Well.
Our assets are a hundred and fifty thousand. This one's two hundred thousand. So this one has a lot higher standards and.
The, lower standards.
Well, allows more in assets and allows higher income.
Income.
The.
Lower, yeah, lower eligibility standards.
Lower eligibility standards.
I'm just gonna say it, because God will punish me if I don't, but I.
He's never said that before.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna say it. I probably shouldn't, but I'm gonna say this. You know, when we had the elderly exemptions, that was a long process. And John Verpie, he had every spreadsheet imaginable, et cetera. This is now thrown at us at the eleventh hour for one. And I will give credit or whoever, you know, Barbara was, at the time Barbara Griffin, the Selectman, had concerns about that elderly exemption because she wasn't sure what ex, to what extent it would have in terms of decreasing our, and I will wholeheartedly admit that I probably didn't agree with her at that time. But I think she was right. And in hindsight, if I could go back in time, maybe I would have, maybe not have supported it wholeheartedly. Because you don't know what impact it's gonna have and you gotta take some, some smaller measured steps. So Barbara, you were right. So I, I've said that. I've said my piece. You can write that down. That's fine.
Let the minutes reflect that.
In hindsight, he said Barbara was right.
I'm, I'm fine with that, because I think, you know, and I've said this to some of you.
Which Barbara?
Griffin. And I've said this to some of you privately, that.
Former Selectman Barbara Griffin.
Right. You do this job, you know, before you do it, you, you think certain things and then when you do it, you're like, wait a second. The people that I didn't really agree with back then, they were kind of right on a lot of things. But, so, on, on this one, I just don't think that I will support this simply because it, there's no statistics, there's no backing. We have nothing.
You have no idea how many disabled people you have or if they meet those requirements.
There's no, no idea of the impact. There, there's just simply. And it's not a reflection of the fact that I don't agree, I agree or I disagree with it, but I don't know the financial impact to the community. And just like all of the other things that we've done, whether it be veterans credits, elderly exemptions, this particular disability exemption, it does, it takes money and it redistributes that tax burden to others. And not knowing what even could be the remote potential of this, some of the petitioners could say, hey, there's only about twenty of us in the community. How do I know that? How do I know it's not a hundred and fifty? How do I, what do I know? What would be the net impact? Because if we were to lose, you know, a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue from this, that means that everybody else has to pay for that. Which, I'm not saying I necessarily would object to, but, that the voters should object to, but they should at least know what that's gonna be. And do we have any idea from the petitioner as to?
No.
Alright.
And I, and I would, just in, in defense of, of that period, we did have some rough estimates. We did run numbers. We had an idea.
Yeah, no, in that one.
We had a wide range.
We had a big range, right?
And over the, those ensuing years, I, I've looked at some of the elderly exemptions and you look at some of the savings that individuals have and to think that if those exemptions weren't there, how many people, how many of the elderly that are on fixed incomes would no longer be living in Goffstown simply because they couldn't afford it? So, you know, there's two sides to that. If, if there was a cost, I will give you that, but.
They're trapped right in the middle of the range.
Yeah, I mean, we're not doing anything different than other communities.
The difference, I think the difference was that the last time that we did this, John Verpie did like a ton of work.
Oh, absolutely, I agree, yes.
There were meetings after meetings. He was in here all the time and he had spreadsheet after spreadsheet. And there was a calculated.
Correct. We knew, we knew what the, we knew what the costs potentially were.
Risk.
We knew, we knew, we knew it. We knew the waters knew that. Right.
Yep.
And they passed it.
So this, we have absolutely no clue. So, I don't know, we'll have to address that when it does. Anybody else want to make comment or? Okay, so we have that one. We have.
You have a noise ordinance one.
Remember we have copies of that?
I did make copies for everyone, because I was waiting for them to all be verified.
They already read the numbers.
Okay.
And the last one was to see if town will vote to establish a police detail revolving fund pursuant to our C eighty-nine, thirty-one ninety-five H. So I'll get your copies of these.
That's a duplicate of.
Of what?
That was submitted by petition?
Yes.
So that's a duplicate of what we discussed already.
You discussed.
We discussed.
Right, which we declined.
Declined.
Now, go forward. Now, is there a cost in that one? Because in order to do it, need seed money.
There's nothing stated in the article. It just says money received from charges or services shall be allowed to accumulate from yet a year. There's no implementation plan.
Okay.
But if it worked then. If it was the pass.
So that's up to us to figure if it passes. That's how we have to.
Right, you'd have to figure out, because you have it in your budget.
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to figure it out.
We'll tell you the big part.
Well, the seed, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I think the seed money would be our current budget.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And then if, once this, if this were to prevail and.
You'd lose the revenue in your budget because you'd be putting it into a revolving fund for seed money. You decide how much you need.
But after that, it'll be a push because you would be budgeting for it in the first place.
Yep.
Question. We had the, my understanding is the school board has, part of their reductions is the elimination of the school resource officer?
Yes.
Our budget is predicated on reimbursement?
We did not include the revenue?
Yeah.
We did not.
We did not, because we didn't know if it was going to make it. It's not in there.
It's not in the revenue.
I verified that with Jan. I know we had discussed making an adjustment, but we never made that adjustment because I don't know where that's going right now.
Yeah. And just also, you know, for the record, I mean, the, this budget, whether it be compromised or not with the Budget Committee, does not fund a police officer and it does not fund, and it was a building inspection secretary that is not funded and that person is no longer employed with the town. So there have been, when people say staffing, you know, adjustments and reductions, they, they have occurred. I mean, we are surviving with one less police officer. Is that optimum? No. But it's in light of what we're trying to accomplish here. I don't want, you know, I know that sometimes gets lost.
Well, I, I have to say something to that though. I mean, you say we're functioning with one less officer. I guess we are functioning with one less officer, but there's also, we're also paying a price for that. We are.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you and I'm, I'm saying I also think that whenever you're down personnel, what you're, what you're accustomed to, everybody's having to pick up the, has to pick up the.
I, 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 I understand, but I just wanted everybody here to, to understand that it's difficult to address that issue to be a little bit more specific without making it a public, publicly noticed where we have.
Correct.
deficiencies or vulnerabilities in the community and what sections of town.
Right.
Okay? Publicly, I'm not gonna go beyond that.
Right, now I hear you.
But I just want everybody to be aware that there are some situations, unfortunately, that could have very well, I can't say for positive, because you don't know what could have happened, but because of us being down, there were some situations that, things that happened that possibly may have not happened. I can't say much, I can't say more than that.
Okay. I think we probably have a committee report here and there, do we, or no?
I think so.
No, okay. So we have one more order of business. And that is, we have to review the Goffstown Police Dispatch slash Clerks collective bargaining agreement. And.
So you recessed too.
The board, just so everybody knows, the board last week ratified the police officers bargaining unit agreement and that will appear in the warrant. We have before us this evening, the Police Dispatch and Clerks collective bargaining agreement. And it was just voted on by that bargaining unit and now, today. And now the board was presented with it just this evening. We have not had an opportunity to review, to review it in its finality, although we know the vast majority of what's in, what's in here. And the board does need to, to read through it before we can take an official vote. So we're going to recess and I, I, I don't know how long this might take. This might take thirty minutes, it might take forty-five minutes from there.
Andrew doesn't have to stick around for that.
No.
Andrew, we'd never get anything done in forty-five minutes.
So, all we're going, all we're going to do is, we're simply gonna go read through it to make sure that all the board members are comfortable with the language that is in here, because this is a new collective bargaining agreement. And then from there, we'll come out of our recess and we'll take a vote to either ratify or to not ratify. And after that, there is no non-public business and our, our meeting will be adjourned. So my best estimate is that it'll take us somewhere between thirty to forty-five minutes. And Andrew, I'll leave that up to you if you're be, you know, whether you would like to stick around or, or not. But, you know, nine thirty to nine forty-five, we'll be back.
That makes sense for me to stick around.
Okay. Alright.
Will you be me, Andrew? He can't be me. I'll take the motion down.
So you won't be showing like Three Stooges reruns in between during the intermission?
Before we recess?
Yeah.
I just have a quick question. Sue, you were going to check on Elva Drive and the status, whether we were providing plowing or you were gonna confirm.
Oh, yeah, I, we never gave the okay to do plowing, so I assume no plowing's being done.
Right, which I think you said the last time, but you were gonna confirm that.
Okay, sending Carla. Email now.
Never assume.
Thank you.
Yeah, last time I remember, one of the signs was knocked down.
Well, you'll find out, just go.
You're absolutely right.
Drive, drive the sign was.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Sign was knocked down.
Yeah, fell down. The ground was frozen.
The Board of Selectmen is back from a recess in which we reviewed the collective bargaining agreement proposal from the Goffstown Police Dispatch and Clerks. And at this point, I'd entertain a motion from, from the board with regard to the Dispatch Clerks contract.
I make a motion to approve the contract with the dispatches, PPA?
Okay, and I would assume that based upon our discussions, that would include that the changes that.
Correct.
Article twenty-three.
That were, Article thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Yeah. Terms of agreement.
On page twenty-three.
On page twenty-three. On page twenty-three, right. Alright. Um, all those in favor of-
Is there a second?
I need a second, right, any, anyone?
Yes, I'll second it.
You'll second it. And again, all those in favor of ratifying the contract with the Goffstown Police Dispatch and Clerks bargaining, uh, unit, uh, provided that those, uh, changes are, are, uh, made, uh, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those against?
Aye.
Okay, it's three, two. Alright. We're done. On the agenda, um, a, uh, I'd have Department of Public Works and somebody from Parks and Rec, uh, whoever, and then the other interested parties with regard to the barn or land, we haven't really had an update there in terms of excavation, um, what we're gonna be-
Were we putting a committee together for that?
Yeah, I think, I, I talked to the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec Chairman, and he's like, well, I don't know what, you know, we can certainly get a group together or talk about it on the Parks and Rec side, but, you know, what is the board's, uh, interest? And I think that's kind of where, you know, where we're at, so-
We should be looking at this with the loss of cemetery field, and now we're talking about using the field at Parsons, et cetera. It would make sense if we're gonna do work at Par, you know, in Parsons, why wouldn't we be looking at that, that parcel and see where it fits in?
Well, I think, I think we've got a lot of things at play, we have the, um, the materials on site, and we have to then come up with the, the, the medium to long-term plan, there's actually a short-term plan for the sand pit, technically.
And we might need some of that material for the cemetery.
Correct, so there's, so, right, so there is a short-term plan for the existing sand pitch, which, sand pit, which could be reclaimed rather quickly, and then there is a more medium and long-term plan as we excavate more, um, then more and more things would get developed. And I guess where I'm coming from is, I would like for, um, you know, DPW to work with us on, on that one, also get Parks and Rec involved, and other key stakeholders as deemed fit, and start a phase, start to develop a plan that we know will be phased. And, um, one thing that we haven't, and that's why I want to talk about it, you know, next week, is what is our game plan? We knew that the short-term thing would be the excavation of materials, et cetera, but now, what about, you know, creating the, the community space that we had talked about, and I think Parks and Rec Commissioner mentioned, well, does the, is the board looking to carve out a piece of land for municipal use? What we're, and we need to have all those discussions before you can let us go, and then we can start to talk to other community groups to term, see what their needs are.
Yeah, I think the last time we discussed this, we, we identified four departments as stakeholders. The firing range is down there, so PACE is involved, um, we were talking about future fire stations, so the fire department be involved, uh, DPW is involved, because they're campus, and then Parks and Rec, and then we were talking about who else should be on this committee, and they should come up with a master plan with all the phases in, like you were describing.
And I guess, I guess that's, you know, I think that should be obviously one of our-